Regular session of the Sanggunian Bayan of Sogod, Southern is about to begin with Honorable Prof. Olo Potampari.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's time for the session to the Central Bayan Hall. We'll start our session with the preliminaries, three years, national anthem, Saturday evening, so... by our sound system, then to be followed with the recitation of PCL Creed to be led by Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma. Then the singing of PCL hymn. Okay, for the prayer, please?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with a humble heart, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we begin this regular session. Lord, we ask that you would bless every person who is gathered here today, and that you would be present with us in a special way. We pray that this session would be a time of learning, growth, and fellowship for all of us. Help us to listen to one another with open hearts and open minds, and to support one another as we strive to serve you in all that we do. Please give us the strength and the courage to follow your will, and to use the gifts and talents you have given us to make a positive difference in the world. We pray all of this in your holy name, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Sentrokan ningga ngawigantang ang katakum mo walay sama. Magabusaikapukiran kadahatan timaan sa'yo katulad. Ang bulupyo nga nagkamusta sa pampalambon ng lungsod. Ikaw kabahin sa matagusa, ikaw among gihiguma. Sugod o sugod, among pinalanggang lungsod. Sa katalagman utpagsulay, ikaw malingon sa kanunay. Sugod o sugod, mauswagon ng lungsod. Ang gabilin mo sa masahulawan, gani ato karunhang tutsa kang puran. Ikaw hingpit nga inspirasyon sa tanang sugod. Imapaas na mo ang imong bandila sa kanunay panalitan ka. Sugod o sugod, among pinalanggang lungsod. Sa katalagman utpagsulay, ikaw malingon sa kanunay. Sugod o sugod, mauswagon ng lungsod. Sugod o sugod, mirahang lahong lungsod.
Sa puso ng bawat kungsihal, arangalan ang maglilipat sa bayan. Sa isip ng bawat kungsihal, ang ibigan ang gumawa ng kabutihan. Sa diwan ng bawat kungsihal, pagalang sa karapatan ng mga mamamayan. Alin sunod sa saligang batas, at kapag nananang buong samayanan. Ang higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas, higa sa pagsulok ng kabuntaran. Kasama tatuwang ng pamahalaan, katlayang pagmamahal sa inang bayan. Ang higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas, higa ng pagkatatasa. Tabalikap sa pagkataguyot ng isang matatap na Republika. Sa puso ng bawat kungsihal, nananait ang alam ng bayanihan. Sa isip ng bawat kungsihal, matibayon ang galing na kasibakan. Sa diwan ng bawat kungsihal, paniniwaga sa demokratong paraan. Alin sunod sa bitiging ng Adios, makatao at makakalikasan. Ang higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas, higa sa pagsulok ng kabuntaran. Kasama tatuwang ng pamahalaan, katlayang pagmamahal sa inang bayan. Ang higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas, higa ng pagkatatasa. Tabalikap sa pagkataguyot ng isang matatap na Republika. Tabalikap sa pagkataguyot ng isang matatap na Republika. Ang higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas, higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas, higa ng mala kungsihal ng Pilipinas.
Mabuhay ang PCL!
Okay, next order of business is roll call. Madam Secretary, please.
Honorable Jose Ramil Golo, who is the acting municipal mayor, Honorable Rhett Antonetti Gabrunino, Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma, Honorable Rofu Siolo, Presiding Officer Potampari, Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior, Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas, Honorable Egardo C. Atwill, Honorable Elucio D. Filenar,
Present.
Honorable Alna S. DeHarmy, Honorable Diviti Galdo, and Honorable Roost Award M. Luremia is on official travel, except for, ah, the three of the members running around, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, considering that the majority of the members are present, so our session this morning is in quorum. Next is the reading of the minutes of the previous session and approval of the same. Again, Secretary, please.
The ninth regular session of the Sanggunian Bayan of Sogod Southern Late was called to order by the Presiding Officer, Honorable Jose Ramil G. Golo, on September 4, 2025, at 9:15 in the morning. The preliminaries included prayer, singing of national anthems, Saturday evening, Sogod evening, recitation of PCL Creed, led by Honorable Rhett Antonetti Gabrunino. The roll call showed the presence of all members except for Honorable Elucio D. Filenar, with his arrival acknowledged shortly after 9:33 in the morning. They were constituting a quorum. Reading of the minutes of the previous session and approval of the same. The minutes of the previous session was considered upon motion of Honorable Alna S. DeHarmy, jointly seconded by Honorables Villia Wilma, Atwill, Filenar Luremia, and Casil Senior. The body dispensed with a full reading of the minutes and directed the secretary to read only the legislative actions taken. After the reading, no corrections or rectifications were raised. On motion of Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas, jointly seconded by Honorables Atwill, Villia Wilma, DeHarmy, Casil Senior, and Galdo, the minutes of the previous session, together with the legislative actions passed therein, were adopted and approved. Matters arising from the minutes of the previous session, non-visitors, hour. Engineer Lucio Herona, President of the Sogod Protector's, appeared before the Sanggunian Bayan to present concerns regarding stray dogs in the municipality. He recalled a previous resolution mandating the establishment of dog shelters in every barangay, which however has not been, has not yet been realized. He emphasized the increasing number of stray dogs, difficulties in sustaining their feeding, and offered to provide a private space in Pang Pamahawan, Bontok, should the shelter be considered. He also suggested free dog legation as part of the solution. Members of the body acknowledged the efforts of the Sogod Protector's, but explained that the municipal budget has other priorities at present. Honorable DeHarmy noted that assistance may only be considered in future budget preparations. Honorable Atwill and Honorable Galdo pointed out that some barangays have previously allocated funds for feeding captured dogs, while others did not. Honorable Paranas suggested a community-based fundraising activity, such as a raffle, to generate immediate resources for the shelter, and committed to call a meeting with concerned committees, dog lovers, and local stakeholders. Honorable Gabrunino and Honorable Villia recommended lobbying with the municipal mayor, reviewing existing mowas with food establishments, and exploring agreements.
Okay, Honorable Paranas.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, and good morning. Since the secretary, I believe that has already sent through a mail the full context of the minutes of the last regular session, so I move to dispense the reading of the minutes. Only the legislative actions, Honorable Chairman, will be read. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion moved by Honorable Paranas to read only the legislative action to disperse the reading of the full context of the minutes. Anybody to second the motion? Seconded, Honorable Atwill, Wilma, DeHarmy, and Filenar. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is approved. So Madam Secretary kindly read only the legislative actions passed during the last regular session.
Apologies, wala na dag PowerPoint. Napikihan si Arlin. The following were the resolutions and ordinance enacted. Ordinance Number 2025-361, sponsored by the Honorable Rofu Siolo. An ordinance creating the position of Local Youth Development Officer, LYDO, establishing a separate office for the Local Youth Development Unit, no longer under the mayor's office, defining its organizational structure, mandates, and functions, prescribing its salary grade, providing funds there for and for other purposes in the municipality of Sogod Southern Late. For information of everybody, there were... It could be. Actually, there were four mandatory positions passed or to be enacted last session, but I have informed the Honorable Olo that three of them were already issued the corresponding ordinance, reflecting the salary grade 24, which was being requested. Thank you. Resolution granting monthly allowance to Ms. Elvera Kimson and Henry C. Balaro Jr., back secretariat, in the amount of 1,000 pesos each, effective September 25, chargeable against communication allowance under Office of the Municipal Mayor. It was moved by Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior, jointly seconded by Honorables Atwill, Paranas, Villia Wilma, Luremia, Galdo, DeHarmy, Gabrunino, and Filenar. It was approved. A resolution authorizing the Honorable Shepherd Lino Estan in his capacity as municipal mayor of the LGU of Sogod Southern Late to enter into a memorandum agreement with Barangay Kahupian Forest Developers Association of Sogod, Baka Fodas, as represented by Marijon H. Pakati, PO President, on the utilization of a 5 hectare grassland within the Community-Based Forest Management Area, CBFMA, regarding the establishment of the LGU's vegetable production area. It was moved by Honorable Rofu Siolo and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution strongly endorsing to the Regional Executive Director, Andrew Dodofo Araiz, DVM, Department of Agriculture, Regional Office Number 8, Tacloban City, the requested livelihood project of Miga Irrigators Association Incorporated, namely, Duck Multiplier Farm, under the Livelihood Economic Enterprise Development, LED program of the Department of Agriculture. It was moved by Honorable Rofu Siolo and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution adopting the Municipal Disaster Reduction and Management Council, MDRMC, Resolution Number 8, Series 2025. A resolution approving the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Investment Plan, MDRR-MIP, for calendar year 2026 of Sogod Southern Late. Ah, sorry. A resolution giving financial assistance in favor of Mr. Wilson Apoli, General Manager of Late South MPC and Chairperson of Sogod Bay Cluster, Sogod Southern Late, for their Cooperative Summit 2025. On October 4, 2025, the SLSU MPC sent Roque Sogod Southern Late in the amount of 10,000 pesos, chargeable against donations, under MOE of the mayor's office. Again, a resolution adopting the MDRRMC Resolution Number 8, Series 2025. A resolution approving the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Investment Plan for calendar year 2026 of Sogod Southern Late. It was moved by Honorable Elucio D. Filenar and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of catering service to be tendered during the peer education training on ASRH in emergencies on September 15 to 17, 2025, at second floor Liga Hall, Barangay Zone 4, Sogod Southern Late, in the amount of 67,500 pesos, chargeable against the youth development programs and activities. It was moved by Honorable Roost Award M. Luremia, jointly seconded by Honorables Villia Wilma, Filenar, Gabrunino, Galdo, Casil Senior, DeHarmy, and Atwill. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of snacks and lunch tendered during the farmer's orientation on school on air under Masaganang Coco Buhayan, Rajo Iskuella sa Pagnini Yogan, on July 11 to 12, 2025, at Barangay Dagsa and Mac, Sogod Southern Late, in the amount of 63,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under Municipal Agriculture Office. It was moved by Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment in the amount of 93,750 pesos for the expenses incurred during the Community Canology Caravan in the municipality of Sogod on April 20, 2025, at ICP Gymnasium, Sogod Southern Late, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma, jointly seconded by Honorables Luremia, DeHarmy, Gabrunino, Filenar, Casil Senior, and Galdo. It was approved. A resolution giving financial assistance in favor of Barangay San Roque, Sogod Southern Late, in the amount of 40,000 pesos for payment of sound system during the cultural activities, chargeable against social-cultural activities budget under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Elucio D. Filenar and jointly seconded by Honorables Olo, Atwill, Paranas, Krishna, Villia Wilma, DeHarmy, Galdo, and Gabrunino. It was approved. A resolution allocating an amount of 84,550 pesos for the expenses to be incurred during the strengthening collaboration for effective barangay drug clearing, coordination meeting with PIDEA and BADAX, in the municipality of Sogod, chargeable against Anti-Drug Abuse Council. It was moved by Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution allocating an amount of 190,000 pesos for the expenses to be incurred during the LGU Rural Health Unit Dental Services Establishment in the municipality of Sogod Southern Late, chargeable against LGU Philhealth Share. It was moved by Honorable Alna S. DeHarmy, jointly seconded by Honorables Olo, Villia Wilma, Atwill, Luremia, Filenar, Galdo, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of catering service tendered during the Open Government Partnership localization program documentation of open government practices in the municipality of Sogod at Municipal Conference Hall, Sogod, Sogod, on August 7, 2025, in the amount of 11,250 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Egardo C. Atwill, jointly seconded by Honorables Olo, Villia Wilma, Luremia, DeHarmy, Filenar, Gabrunino, Galdo, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of snacks standard during the Civil Society Organization Conference at second floor Liga Building on August 12, 2025, in the amount of 6,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating spends under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior, jointly seconded by Honorables Atwill, Villia Wilma, Luremia, Olo, Filenar, Gabrunino, and Galdo. It was approved. A resolution requesting the Commission and Audit, Masen City, for the demolition of temporary stalls that will be affected with the construction of fish port as financed by the Philippine Fish Port Development Authority. Philippine Fish... Fisheries Development Authority. Solar-powered cold storage with GenSet as financed by the Department of Agriculture, and ice plant which is financed by the BIFAR, Ola, Barangay Zone 3, Sogod Southern Late. It was moved by Honorable Rofu Siolo and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of snacks in the amount of 2,500 pesos for the public hearing conducted last August 29, 2025, of the proposed municipal ordinance Number 2025-355, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under Sanggunian Bayan Office. It was moved by Honorable Diviti Galdo, jointly seconded by Honorables Olo, Villia Wilma, Atwill, Luremia, DeHarmy, Filenar, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution giving financial assistance in favor of Nancy B. Beronio for the two Sogodan athletes who will participate in the upcoming Batang Pinoy National Competition on October 25 to 30, 2025, in General Santos City, in the amount of blank, wala upay confirmation, chargeable against donations, under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Roost Award M. Luremia, jointly seconded by Honorables Atwill, Villia Wilma, Filenar, DeHarmy, Casil Senior, Galdo, and Gabrunino. It was approved. A resolution giving financial assistance to Project Zero for their participation in the upcoming International Dance Competition, which is the Champions Tour Finals in Indonesia on November 21 to 23, 2025, through Mr. Joden Salera. through Mr. Jaden Salera, in the amount of 10,000 pesos, chargeable against donations, under MOE of the Mayor's Office. It was moved by Honorable Leviti Galdo and jointly seconded by Honorables Atwill, Paranas, Villia At... Hello, Villia Atwill?
183, I'm sorry. Wala pa na print. Villia Atwill daw. Villia Atwill.
Sorry, Villia Wilma, Luremia, Casil Senior, Filenar, Gabronino, and Dejarmee. A resolution granting medical assistance to Mr. Ronnie Puntod of Barangay Mabikay, So Good Southern Lake, in the amount of 3,000 pesos, chargeable against donations, under MOE of the Mayor's Office. It was moved by Honorable Leviti Galdo and jointly seconded by Honorable Atwill. Hello?
184 copy paste. Naun sa mama. Wala pa nun ina-finalize.
Wala pa ko supporting. Apologies ma. Gabronino, Filenar, and Casil Senior. It was approved. Copy paste. A resolution granting financial assistance to Salika Bataan Youth Organization for their activity entitled Sayawugawit, the Salika Bataan Grand Opening and Festival of Talents Competition and Collaboration with the Liga ng Mga Barangay and SKE Federation, on September 13 to 20, 2025, in the amount of 300,000 pesos, chargeable against assistance to NGOs and other people's organization program under MOE of the Mayor's Office. It was moved by Honorable Leviti Galdo and jointly seconded by Honorables Atwill, Paranas, Luremia, Casil Senior, Filenar, Dejarmee, and Gabronino. It was approved. A resolution for the adoption and approval of the Joint Committee Meeting on Rules and Laws and Market Committees with regards to the operation of the So Good Night Market Association and the request for the crafting of a memorandum agreement with this local government unit. It was moved by Honorable Rufus Iolo and jointly seconded by Honorables Villia Wilma, Luremia, Filenar, Gabronino, Dejarmee, and Casil Senior. It was approved. Ang sa adaption sa finance kay naawahe, na-overlook na ko sir. A resolution declaring Barangay Libas appropriation ordinance number 1, Series 2025, an ordinance authorizing supplemental budget number 1, Series of 2025, involving an amount of 640,000 pesos only for the following project: to purchase LED flood type light and sound system for multipurpose center, installation of solar streetlights, and installation of glass door and glass office cubicle operative in its entirety. It was moved by Honorable Alberto Casil Senior and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangüniyan Bayan Present. It was approved. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Senator Ronald Bato de la Rosa for financial assistance in the form of medical assistance to endangered and financially incapacitated patients by IFIF program in favor of the municipality of So Good Southern Lake. It was moved by Honorable Alnais Dejarmee and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangüniyan Bayan Present. It was approved. A resolution for the adoption and approval of the Committee Report of the Committee on Finance to review the tax ordinance number 1 of Barangay Malinao, So Good Southern Lake. It was moved by Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior, jointly seconded by Honorables Galdo, Filenar, Gabronino, Dejarmee, Villia, and Luremia. It was approved. Those were all the minutes and legislative actions taken up as of the previous regular session, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you have any questions, rectifications with regards to the minutes as email to our accounts and to the legislative actions that being read today? That's here, here's none, so may I request somebody for the adoption and approval? Okay, Honorable Dejarmee?
I move for the adoption and approval of the previously read minutes. Thank you.
So motion, move by Honorable Dejarmee, anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable Filenar, Honorable Villia Wilma, Honorable Casil, and Honorable Atwill. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is approved. Next is the matters arising from the minutes of the previous session. Do you have something? None, so let's proceed to the visitors' hour. None, also? Next is a privilege hour. Anybody who wishes to enjoy the privilege hour? Okay, Honorable Paranas?
I'd like to earmark three resolutions, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, noted. Anybody else wish to enjoy the privilege? Honorable Villia?
Good morning, Honorable Chairman. I would like to earmark one resolution. Thank you.
One resolution, okay, noted. Anybody else? Honorable Gabronino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I would just like to grab this opportunity to tackle about the communication last session regarding the the request of interposing no objection requested by Engineer Anthony Ichibari. I was able to get a hold of the municipal mayor and he said that he will talk first with the said engineer, Mr. Chairman. I was not able to contact Engineer Anthony. Maybe the secretariat has the contact number of the said respondent, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, noted, Honorable Gabronino. So we will wait for the advice from the Office of the Mayor with regards to the application of the requested resolution of Engineer Ichibari with regards to the resolution of no objection along LP Conception. Okay, anybody else? Honorable Casil?
Man, I would like to earmark on the resolution for a financial assistance, medical assistance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, one resolution? Okay. No more? For the privilege hour? Okay, let's proceed to the reading and references to corresponding committees of the following ordinances, none, resolution, petitions, communications, none, so calendar of business, unfinished business, none, business for the day. Orders, none, resolution, we have three executive agenda from the Office of the Municipal Mayor. The Honorable Presiding Officer, through the Honorable Sangüniyang Bayan, So Good Southern Lake. Sir, in closer with, please find executive agenda certified as ordained mission for your honor's favorable action to it. Number one, passage of resolution allocating an amount of 2,250 pesos to defray the cost of the third quarter meeting of PWDs on September 19, 2025, at PDAO Office of the municipality of So Good, chargeable against persons with disability welfare program. Honorable Paranas?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution allocating an amount of 2,250 pesos to defray the cost for the third quarter meeting of PWD on September 19, 2025, at PDAO Office of the municipality of So Good, chargeable against persons with disability welfare program.
Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Paranas, anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable Atwill, Villia, Dejarmee, Casil, Filenar. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is hereby approved. Number two, is a passage of resolution authorizing payment of catering service tender during the IX must pay out on April 21 and 22, 2025, at ISLU Cabard Court, So Good Southern Lake, in the amount of 61,250 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the Mayor's Office. Honorable Casil?
I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of catering service tender during the IX must pay out on April 21 and 22, 2025, at ISLU Cabard Court, So Good Southern Lake, in the amount of 61,250 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the Mayor's Office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Casil, anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable Filenar, Honorable Gabronino, Honorable Dejarmee, Honorable Wilma, and Honorable Atwill. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is approved. Number three, is a passage of resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Ms. Eileen I. Mukha of Barangay Kabatbaran, So Good Southern Lake, in the amount of 4,000 pesos for her hospitalization, chargeable against emergency fund of the ISWD. Who is the district councillor of Cluster 1? Okay. Okay, Honorable Casil again?
I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Ms. Eileen I. Mukha of Barangay Kabatbaran, So Good Southern Lake, in the amount of 4,000 pesos for her hospitalization, chargeable against emergency fund of the ISWD. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Casil, anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable Atwill, Honorable Villia Wilma, Honorable Dejarmee, Honorable Gabronino, and Honorable Filenar. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is approved. So we're through with the executive agenda from the Office of the Municipal Mayor. So we have here earmark resolutions. Number one, earmark by Honorable Paranas, three resolutions. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. The first resolution, Honorable Chairman, is for our secretary, Marian Antigra, because her child was bitten by a dog and she needs four shots of anti-rabies and it will cost 600 per shot. So I will ask the the council that we will give her a financial assistance in the amount of 3,000 to defray those shots, Honorable Chairman. So if we will give her the six, uh, four shots, amounting 600 each shots, it will cost, I think, six times four is 24. So maybe we can give her 25 or 3,000. It's up to the body. I will ask everyone how much we will give. Honorable Chairman? Sagpila? Okay, 3,000. Okay, I move. I move for, sa ramanto? I, our, a resolution granting financial assistance to Marian Antigra in the amount of 3,000 pesos to defray the medical, um, anti-rabies shots for his, her child. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Chargeable against?
Chargeable against your salary. Oh, sorry, chargeable against MOE of the Mayor's Office.
Okay, there's no problem with your salary. Okay, so there's a motion, move by Honorable Paranas.
Your salary.
As move by Honorable Paranas, anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable, how about unanimously seconded?
Okay, thank you.
So the motion is hereby approved.
No, na na kay pangbayad an. Uh, next, Honorable Chairman, if I may, second resolution?
Okay, go ahead.
I move to pass a resolution allowing the protectors to put a can in every store in this municipality called crowdfunding can for donations to defray the expenses for the dog impound shelter. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Paranas, anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable Filenar, Dejarmee, Casil, and Gabronino. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is hereby approved. Okay, number three?
Number three, Honorable Chairman, thank you. I move to pass a resolution requesting all catering services in this municipality to provide their leftovers to the shelter of our impounded dogs again. And at same time, Honorable Chairman, I, I would like to, to schedule a meeting for the coan, ka ng, uh, catering owners.
Let's do it one by one.
Okay.
Let's dispose the resolution first.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Paranas, anybody to second the motion? Seconded unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. Okay, for the third?
Fourth?
Fourth resolution?
Okay, I move to pass a resolution requesting to the, requesting to the, uh, requesting the governor, Honorable Damian Mercado, for the for the castration of dogs through the board member. Honorable Chairman, help me with the to, with the...
I think we, we will uh, request the Office of the Provincial Governor then attention the Provincial Veterinary Office
Okay.
Through
Through
Board Member Jason Calba.
Jason Calba. Okay, so I will, I will, I will reiterate, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution requesting the Honorable Governor Damian Mercado to request the Provincial Veterinary Office through Board Member Jason Calba for the conduct of sa ramanto, sakto ba ko marin?
Castration?
Castration. Castration for the captured astridogs. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
In the shelter?
In the shelter. And basin pod ug pwidi ra pod ug iapel ag ka ng ka da barangay.
Okay, so there's a motion, move by Honorable Paranas requesting among others, the Provincial Governor, Honorable Damian Mercado, through Honorable Jason Calba, Board Member, to request the Provincial Veterinary Office for the schedule of castration of dogs captured in, and dogs in the shelter, no? Of So Good Southern Lake. Okay, before that. Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Paranas, anybody to second the motion? Seconded unanimously, Honorable Casil. Unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. Okay, that's all for the four resolutions as earmarked by Honorable Paranas. Next, one earmark resolution by Honorable Villia Wilma.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I move to pass a resolution granting financial support in the amount of 50,000 for the celebration of Linggo ng Kabataan in the municipality of So Good on September 3 to 29, 2025, chargeable against Youth and Sports Development Fund. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, again, Honorable Villia, who's the P of the, the recipient of the, uh, the financial assistance? Is that our activity? So this will be for the Linggo ng Kabataan. So we need an activity designed for this purpose kay Linggo ng Kabataan activity. So, okay. Okay, so there's a motion, move by Honorable Vilma Wilma, Villia Wilma, Vilma Wilma. Malipat na man ta ni ni. Anybody to second the motion? Seconded Honorable Atwill, Casil, Dejarmee, and Filenar. Questions? Question, Honorable Gabronino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, given that according to the public... I would just like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, given that according to Republic Act 107 or 2, the Linggo, Linggo ng Kabataan should be celebrated during the month of August, Mr. Chairman. So we should pass another resolution manifesting our celebration of the said Linggo ng Kabataan this coming September for particular reason, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, so that is in adendum to the resolution as passed by Honorable Villia Wilma. Okay, considering that it is not a question but only some addendum with regards to the proposed measures. So is there any objection? There's none, so the motion is hereby approved. Then for the addendum, Honorable Gabronino? Thank you, we have to pass a resolution in connection with the resolution passed by Honorable Villia Wilma?
I move to pass a resolution moving the celebration of the Linggo ng Kabataan 2025 of the municipality of So Good from the month of August to the month of September.
2025?
2025. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's a motion, move by Honorable Gabronino, anybody to second the motion. Seconded Honorable Atwill, how about Honorable Villia Wilma? Okay, unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. One last earmarked resolution by Honorable Casil.
I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Kalip Anggarment Tanganang Angtirodi Apledo Es Maestrado living at Barangay Rizal, So Good, Sanoli, for his medication, chargeable against.
In the amount?
In the amount of 3,000 pesos only, chargeable against the IX of the municipal, under the municipal mayor, Mr. Chairman, official municipal mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so kindly supply the full name of the recipient so that it will be, it will be reflected in the documents kay mapubli maonza in the issuance of a check and how to encas if the full name is not mentioned there, no? Okay? Including also the supporting documents for that purpose in the agency and others, no? Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Casil, anybody to second the motion. Seconded Honorable Atwill, Honorable Villia Wilma, Honorable Paranas, Honorable Diarmy, and Honorable Filenar. Questions? Objection? There's none, so the motion is approved. We'll just tackle this accreditation when we are through with the committee report for the accreditation so that it will be done in one approval. Okay, we're through with the resolutions. Petitions, none. We have communication, we have here additional submitted by our CSO desk officer submitting here with the following list of various CSO organizations for renewal of their accreditation. Okay, so we have to look into their applications. So we will just treat this later when we will treat the committee report for the accreditation so that this will be done in one approval. Unassigned business, none. So we have a committee report, the report of the committee on accreditation held last August 2025 to review the application for the accreditation of the following CSOs. So I think everybody has a copy of the report. I suggest, I request Honorable Casil being the vice chairman of the committee to do the honor of making the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody, everybody has a copy if there's some question regarding this committee report. The committee is willing to answer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so do you have any questions with regards to the report as it now in your hands, the copy is now in your hands? This is with regards to the application for accreditation of number one Kabaskon Irrigators Association, number two LP Concepcion Fisher Fox Seaside Dwellers Association, number three Ruwasa Rural Water Works and Sanitation Association Incorporated, number four Consulación Farmers Association, number five Mahayahai So Good Farmers Irrigators Association, number six Consulación Farmers Association, duha na mani? Number seven Magapso Irrigators Association Incorporated, number eight Javier I. Miss Guapas Women's Association, and number nine South Pacific Integrated Area Development Foundation Incorporated or ISPIANP. Okay, Honorable Paranas?
Honorable Chairman, I perused the copy of the minutes of the report. I found out that the documents submitted for the application for accreditation are all complete. So I think, Honorable Chairman, I have no, this representation, representation has no questions, Honorable Chairman, considering that all the applicants has completed their, their documents for the accreditation, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, so to the other members, do you have questions? None? Okay, Honorable Casil, kindly do the honor of the passing of a resolution, resolution for the adoption and approval of the committee report?
One, considering that the chairman of the accreditation of CSO is our preformatory, pre, sorry, temporary presiding officer, so I move to pass a resolution approving the.
Adoption and approval first of the report.
I move to pass a resolution approving, our adoption approval of the committee report of committee on accreditation of, or CSO and administrative So Good, San oli, for the. Number one is Kabaskon Irrigator Association Incorporated, it, intero le, Honorable Chairman, eh, basaon?
Report, report pa mena, siguro? Okay, there's a motion for the adoption and approval of the report of the committee on accreditation, anybody to second the motion. Unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. Next, for the approval of the application for accreditation of the eight. Eight ra, na do bli en Consulación? Okay, go ahead, Honorable Casil, please.
To pass a resolution approving the application of.
For accreditation?
For accreditation of the following CSO. It's CSO, na, number one is Kabaskon Irrigator Association Incorporated, number two is LP Concepcion Association, Officer Fox Seaside Dwellers, number three is Ruwasa Mac and Salvation Rural Water Works and Sanitation Incorporated, number four Consulación Farmers Association, Mahayahai So Good Farmers Irrigator, Irrigation Association, Magapso Irrigator Association Incorporated, Javier I. Miss Guapas Women's Association, number nine is South Pacific Integrated Area Development Foundation Incorporated or ISPIANP.
Okay, so there's a motion, move by Honorable Casil for the approval of the accreditation, of application for accreditation of the eight CSOs, anybody to second the motion. Unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. So we have here additional executive adjournment as sent from the office of the municipal mayor. So we have to tackle this. Number one is a passage of resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Ms. Rinalin Malabad Visina of Barangay Magatas in the amount of 4,000 pesos for the payment of coffin chargeable against emergency fund under the ISWD. Okay, so Honorable Villia Wilma kindly pass the said resolution.
I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Ms. Rinalin Malabad Visina of Barangay Magatas in the amount of 4,000 for the payment of coffin chargeable against emergency fund from DSWD. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion, move by Honorable Villia Wilma, anybody to second the motion. Seconded Honorable Paranas? Unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. Okay, so we will tackle the additional application for accreditation after our recess. So we will take a recess for a few minutes. Okay, session resume. So we will tackle now the submitted documents for accreditation as endorsed by our CSO desk officer. Submitting here the following list of various organization for renewal of their accreditation. Number one, San Juan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number two, So Good Astig Association. Number three, Hydroponics Farmers Association. Number four, San Jose I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Ulisihan, number five, Ulisihan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number six, Libas I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number seven, Kaoswagan Motorcycle Drivers Association. Number eight, Kanangaan I Miss Guapa's Women's Association. Number nine, Hibod Hibod I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number ten, Zunto I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number eleven, Zone Five I Miss Guapa's I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number twelve, Malinaw I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number thirteen, Milagruso I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Holos na man de I Miss Guapa, man de ne. Number fourteen, Buak Nako. Number fifteen, Buak Gamay Women's Association. Number sixteen, Binit I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number seventeen, LP Concepcion I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number eighteen, Hubasan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. And number nineteen, Salvation I Miss Guapa's I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Okay, so... Considering that these documents has been reviewed by our CSO desk officer and also considering that the CSOs conference will be held on September 15th, which is, I think, Monday. In order that this association could be assigned to any local special bodies and can participate in voting, we have to approve for their accreditation considering that these associations are for renewal already of their accreditation and we know the fact that the operation of these associations has been recognized by the municipality. So my request for the passage of the accreditation of the following associations. Okay, Honorable Casil, please.
Chairman, I move to pass a resolution approving the various CSO organization for renewal of their accreditation. Number one, San Juan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number two, So Good Astig Association. Number three, Hydroponics Farmers Association. Number four, San Jose I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number five, Ulisihan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number six, Libas I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number seven, Kaoswagan Motorcycle Drivers Association. Number eight, Kanangaan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number nine, Hibod Hibod I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number ten, Zunto I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number eleven, Zone Five I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number twelve, Malinaw I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number thirteen, Milagruso I Miss Guapa's Women's Association. Number fourteen, Buak Nako I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number fifteen, Buak Gamay I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number sixteen, Binit I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number seventeen, LP Concepcion I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number eighteen, Hubasan I Miss Guapa Women's Association. Number nineteen, Salvation I Miss Guapa Women's Association. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion for the approval of the renewal for the... For the renewal of the accreditation of nineteen CSOs. Anybody to second the motion? Unanimously seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. Considering that it is already approved, no? The one with the folder was Liberty I Miss Guapa Women's Association not included, so we will include that in our resolution. Everybody is amenable to make it twenty. Okay, so, thank you. Next order business is other matters. Do you have something for the other matters?
I have, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, Honorable Paranas.
This is with regards to the meeting yesterday, Honorable Chairman, with the protectors. Kanang, unsaon man to natong sa kakpit katong buangan ilang proceed pasahan to resolution or delay ra?
I think the role of the Sangkunian Bayan is to act upon the recommendation of the DSWD. So I think the protectors or any other members would talk with the cockpit arena first and then request a recommendation from the DSWD. Then the DSWD will recommend to the Sangkunian for the approval as per our cockpit ordinance.
Ah, okay, okay. So, Honorable Chairman, it is your, pinali your call to assign a member of this august body who will cater with that idea, Honorable Chairman?
I think the protectors know already the process and I think that is part of their work as the proponent. Considering that it is not within our mandate, considering that we are here only for the approval of the recommendation.
Ah, okay.
Dili kita mo ay mag-initiate.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I am clarified.
That is a charitable fundraising, so the proponent should initiate the actions. They have to go with the MSWD office and the operators of the cockpit and make the necessary informations. I think it was agreed yesterday that Honorable Gabronino, being one of the aficionado of (laugh) cockpit aficionado, will help the protectors in this endeavor.
Honorable Chairman, next. How about the idea of going to the registration, the WSL, for more information dissemination to the public with regards to the planned charity event for the protection of dogs?
Eh, mo ba't ya'tong idea? Di ka'awang pangutana?
Yes, that idea was given to the protectors for them to make actions, no? for them to make actions, no? For the information that the shelter of our astridogs is existent.
That is why I am asking this question, Honorable Chairman, because I think I am imagining that it will need a legislative action, a resolution sort of like that. Delete na?
I don't think it needs...
Resolution?
Resolution, considering that our registation is a government station. Anybody who is scheduled there for some engagement, I think they will give even just a few minutes of time for...
So, again, this is for the protectors, again, their job to do this. And next, Honorable Chairman, how about your idea of making amua of the barangay official and between the barangay official and the protectors in putting their dogs to the shelter? Though we need a resolution or a meeting or any communication from our office to the barangay officials?
I think it was discussed yesterday that we will wait for the barangay affairs chairman and the Liga ng barangay president for them to call a meeting with the protectors. So, that is with their, that is not within our command, no? That is the autonomy of the barangay, whether they will enter into or not. Atong ana, we will just, we are giving them ideas on how, no? Not that we will do the act, but only to help.
Ah, okay. So, how about also the GO, Honorable Chairman, that we will give on samampunay, a resolution? Or just an assigning, just telling the vice mayor to...
I think you've been commissioned to talk with the mayor because it is the mayor who has the authority to assign somebody.
It's now my job, the GO, okay, Paranas? So, Honorable Chairman, I would also like to, this is the, kanang, na idea of Honorable Villia to have a meeting to the catering owners, the catering services owners. Kanus akaha, Ma'am Krishna? Kay aron ato ng mga pahiluna, kay aron ta, aron ta mo proceed na ta ugla inapod nga koan. Thirty? Sige, Honorable Villia, please schedule, help me in the schedule. Thirty ko na, September thirty. September thirty. Honorable Chairman, kanang, katubat ang ordinance for the adoption of dogs. Ay, first reading to no, din i-reform ang tuog committee?
Yes, I think during the first reading, I think we have, we must have a copy of the ordinance or the draft of the ordinance.
So, okay.
Dili na pwidi ang title ra?
Okay, okay. So, I remembered the guest by yesterday from Ormok. He said that he will give us a copy, a draft of that ordinance. Proporma of that ordinance, so...
Okay, once you receive the proporma, kindly check if what is applicable in our area and then you will call a meeting together with the protectors to finalize the draft before presenting it to the chamber.
Honorable Chairman, next, last, how about the separate maning ordinance sa adaption or ordinance sa responsible dog ownership? Separate ordinance na sila?
I think that was the, what was transpired in yesterday's meeting. That is subject for a committee report before we will make any interpretation or questions. But now you are presenting it to the body. I think that is, the courage is ahead of the horse, no? So, I think we have to, you have to make the committee report first before taking any actions.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Moro magdagunan na hinontan ini. Ang katong mga, mga resolutions that are needed pwidi ra to giyona. But considering now, mora namantag, you are making the committee report without the report, no? Kay there are questions and answers, which is, I think, at this time, we have to follow the procedures on how to conduct reports, no?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Chairman.
That's why as your presiding officer, I would like to cut short and make first the committee report, then we will do the questions and answers or whatever during that committee report so that everything will be discussed thoroughly. Okay, so, no more for the other matters? No more? Okay. Item number eighteen. Chairman. Okay, there's a motion to adjourn by Honorable Casil. Anybody to second, seconded, Honorable Atwill, Villia Wilma, Diarmee, and File Nar. Questions, objection, there's none, so the motion is approved. So, our session this morning is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much and have a nice day, everyone.